All right, so we give the -- welcome to the town council meeting for 11017. We'll open the meeting with pleasure of these and all of this.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, in indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
We take time, take a moment of silence so we can reflect on our duties and remember all of our first responders and military personnel that are home in the way. Thank you. In accordance with mass general laws, we -- LCAT is actually taking the meetings. Anyone else taking? No. All right. Public comments, we have none. Council response to public comments, item four. Mr. Patterson, who's here tonight, actually brought forward an issue with the manner in which, Pete, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, right? The manner in which we decided to set the rate for town council stipends or pay. The suggestion was that we conduct a public hearing and recall the original vote. So I wanted to put that out. I had met with Mr. Patterson and discussed it, told him that I would bring it to his board's attention so that if anybody has anything to say about it or how they feel about it, what your thoughts are.
At this point, I would only comment that, to date, no appropriation has been made. So nothing's being paid until that money's appropriated, and it can only be appropriated by this council. So at this point, the strategy that this council seems to have adopted is to wait until it becomes part of the budget process, which was my request in the first place, at which time it will become subject to the public hearing, and it will be a matter that can be discussed as part of the regular budget process because we're not going to receive any actual stipend or payment until after that process is through, based on the strategy that's been recently discussed by the council. So at this point, I would suggest we take no action, continue with the budget development, of which the stipends will be part of that. The residents will have an opportunity to debate that and -- or not debate, but comment on that during the public hearing portion of the budget presentation, at which time, if based upon that information, the council wishes to reconsider its vote, we can do it then.
The other point I have is more of a point of procedure where it says council's response to public comments. Typically, what we've done is that we've had a lot of public comments, is address the public comments that were just made. The fact that if there's a motion of this sort, and that motion has been anticipated, it should really be as an agenda item as opposed to having it, in effect, buried in there. So I would say that the motion, if we're making it, would be out of order.
How did I make it a motion?
If it's being made. If it's being made.
Yeah.
Underscore ten times the word "if."
Okay. So based upon my -- if we follow my suggestion, there's no motion to be made.
I'll think it's -- yep.
And it was responding to the original public comments. Pete?
He's not on the docket, so I don't know what we're doing. It's violating agenda laws here.
All right. I mean, we'll talk after. How's that? We and I can speak later. Because you're not on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
I know you wanted to be on the agenda, and I didn't put you on.
Yeah, I kind of wondered what happened with that.
Well, I thought we were going to -- I thought that was for the board to comment on your question.
Okay. What should I do from here?
We'll set it up so you can come and speak.
Okay.
I'll put you on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, so I thought was going to happen. All right. I'm not -- I'm a little confused. If I can't speak, I won't speak. I'm just a little confused on what Eric said.
You're looking for clarity.
What's that? Yeah, I just don't understand exactly what's going to happen. I'll leave. I won't speak if I'm not supposed to, so if you want me to wait till next time.
I really don't mind as you speak, but...
If it's right or wrong, just tell me.
I would rather not get into the open debate or the agenda.
It's actually an open meeting law violation, so.
Yeah, you want, so get me on the agenda like you're supposed to be. Okay.
That's my fault.
May I make a comment? Just a comment?
Sure.
I would like everybody to know that's watching this, everybody that's here, everybody to know that the town council is taking good care of the town, and I want everybody to believe in Kevin Manley as the president. Not only does he know what he's doing and care about the town, he cares about every one of you. I had a personal conversation with Mr. Manley, President Manley. He's a good guy. So I want everybody to know that. Everybody that's listening, everybody that's here.
Thank you. Denise, you're up.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Nice to have you all back after the holidays.
Happy New Year.
We're moving forward with the capital plan for fiscal year ending 2018. In addition to partnering with the town accountant for the capital budget, I've also asked Tom O'Connor and Ryan Quinby, who have participated in the past, to assist with reviewing the plan. They can give history that I wouldn't know, and actually Sarah's only been here a couple of years, so she really has only done a couple of budgets as well. So the process is going forward. We're to the point of sort of rating the projects, and we should have some capital plan pretty well set pretty soon. In addition to the capital plan, we're also starting to gather information for the town's annual report, and any comments or thoughts you have on what's been done in the past. I know we still have a stack of annual reports from last year, and it's now we're starting a new one, so we will probably do less of them. But if you have heard any comments, you know, we don't like those pictures, or does it have to be so wordy, or we want to know more, or financial information, more or less, please share them. They will -- the report will be done from my office, so any comments that you would have to share or have heard would be very helpful. And we're starting the budget process, so it's a busy time in addition to the constant interruptions of could you pick the color of paint? The shade guy is here, can you tell me what kind of shade you want? It's like, oh, my God. So the process of just getting into the office, both physically and mentally, is coming together, and I'm very excited to be here. So the -- I will actually be moving into the new space next week, which is yeoman's work by our public works department. They have done a great job, and similar to the desks that you're seeing here, the quality of workmanship that they are doing is just amazing. They're top-notch. After I move that office, move out of the office I'm in now, that's going to be used for HR, has to be abated for asbestos in the ceiling tiles, I think, and the floor tiles. So the whole room has to be gutted. Half of it is going to be a conference room, which is very badly needed. There really isn't one for anybody to use during the day. And the second half of it will be the HR office, either HR or benefits administration, depending on how the offices shake out. So there'll be a constant for probably in the next six, eight months, shifting of people, moving desks to whatever space there is available. It'll be a very fluid office for a while, but a great job. I'm -- I've set up the interviews for the HR director. They're scheduled for Friday. We have two viable candidates. We didn't get a lot of candidates, but we have two that appear to be a good fit for the town, and I've asked the Longmeadow and the Ludlow HR directors to participate in the interview process. They know HR. I think I know a little bit about it, but they know it much better. So I've gotten some interview questions together, and it should be a good process for Friday, and I'm hoping we get somebody in in February. That'll be great. The new approach for the tri-city, tri-town trolley that Carolyn Brennan reported on in November, in cooperation with the PVTA, Longmeadow and Hampton is moving forward. We're looking at a contract, one with the PVTA that would solidify our relationship with them for the commitment on the bus and the routes and all of that, and one with the three towns. I am looking to do quite a few collaborative things I'll be reporting on with other communities. You get more grants that way if you work collaboratively with other communities, and being good neighbors, aside from being a good neighbor, it can also bring goodwill, but, you know, just maybe more efficiency as well. So any -- I've already told department heads, any opportunities that you see that a neighboring community might be able to either partner with us or us with them, we're working on that. Public Works completed Christmas tree pickup yesterday, and I've given you all a bit of history about it. The JCs used to do it. They no longer have the manpower to do it, so it's fallen to our public works department. If the pickup is -- if trees have been missed, or you're like me and you didn't take your tree down until yesterday, you can bring them to the transfer station yourself. Not that I can bring my tree to the here transfer station, but they can be disposed of even after the pickup date. I've begun researching appointments to town boards and commissions that the town manager's now responsible for. I'm finding there's quite a few members with expired terms, and rather than rush into the process and just reappoint people or leave vacancies or whatever, I am really doing a thorough analysis of who the folks are. I'm talking to the chairman of the boards and commissions, and I would ask you all as well if you know of either problematic somebody that I'm checking to see if they attend the meetings. If I'm checking with them to see if they really want to be reappointed, and the makeup of the board, what it was, its original intent, to make sure that's clear to everybody. So it's a little bit more of a project than just, okay, there's a term that's expired, let's just reappoint. It's a good time to just make sure that we've got the right people in the right places. So any help you can provide on that? I don't know a lot of the town residents yet. Any encouragement to get somebody to participate that you think would be a great fit for something? Please let me know. Since I reported on the problem that we were having with trash collection in mid-December, I thought I'd report that the complaints, one, the complaints have stopped, and two, back in, I think it was October, we had had discussions about they were going to be re-dividing the routes. I didn't connect the two. The re-dividing of the routes was the root of the problem that we were having in December. Some streets were overfilling the trash by the end of the day, and so that's why they couldn't pick up more trash. And then other routes had some space to spare. So in January, they will be starting new routes. A couple -- some streets have been shifted to a different day. They've been notified officially from the trash folks, and they were proactive in doing it. I just never connected the two things as one being the solution to a problem that didn't occur until much later. The Board of Health has been extremely busy, but I'm going to report on good news that we have a grant has been approved for $35,010. And our health director is very busy getting a lot of grants. She's applied for another one again today. This particular one, we do have mosquito spraying now, but it is not extremely effective. They just spray the town wherever they're told to spray. This pays for testing. I provided you with a copy of the article that sort of describes what they will be doing. Again, it's another collaborative measure with maybe three or four other communities. So kudos to Amy for the hard work that she's doing. She's pretty on the ball. Not on my written report, but I do want to let you know that I have been approached by somebody, a photographer, that would like to take an official portrait of the council, being the first council and the first town manager, and he would like to donate his services. So he's checking with the accountant, Sarah, to see how that could be handled. So before we approach that with you all, we'll get some more information. Please let me know if you -- it certainly isn't my idea. I'm not big on pictures and all that stuff, and people that talked to me about it laughed when they saw my reaction, which was, oh, really? So if you're okay with that, I'll keep it going for them.
My only concern on it is that we checking to make sure that, this is going to sound corny, but it's reality, that it's not an ethics violation.
Right.
Because receiving anything, a gift, we're not receiving it personally if it goes up in the town hall or something, but I'm not sure the particulars on that, so it's worth checking before we...
Absolutely, we'll be doing that. But I just didn't want you to hear about it somewhere else and say, oh, well, what's going on with that? No, we'll be checking the ethics to make sure there's no violation there and exactly how that would be handled, what the dollar value is. I don't know a whole lot about it yet, but it'll be moving forward. Lord knows who wants a picture of all of that, but...
Just let me know so I can get a haircut.
Me too.
So happy new year to you all. That's all I have for a report tonight.
I have a couple of quick things for you, Denise. Back in August, and we had discussed this at some point in the fall, and I don't remember when it was, but the governor signed the Act to Modernize Municipal Finance and Government. And we had discussed your team kind of reviewing that act, and it's quite lengthy and quite extensive, to maybe bring forward some of those items that might require legislative action that we might want to adopt in this town for efficiencies and so on. Some of them, and reading through, and I've only read the briefs, or I haven't read the actual act itself.
Yeah.
But some of them look like they'd be very beneficial to the town, to the town finances. As we enter into the budget time, it might be the time for us to be looking at some of those. So we had talked about it in the fall. I haven't heard anything in...
I had lost, honestly, I had lost sight of it, you know, being the...
Yeah, you have nothing on your plate.
Being the temporary person is very different than being the permanent, and now, you know, there were things that I thought, it's not for me to be investing a lot of time in something that I'm handing over to somebody else. So thank you for that reminder, and I certainly will put it on my list.
The other thought that I had is, we discussed at the last meeting that you were going to look into and bring forward a proposal if you felt it was right for moving some of our free cash into the OPEB trust that was established.
I'm having those conversations with Sarah.
Yeah, one of the things, though, after I left and I got thinking about that, and I was reviewing that municipal relief package, and that municipal relief package has language in there about establishing a trust with a interest-bearing account for OPEB liability. I don't know if that requires legislative action or not. I think we already adopted a trust. The thought that occurred to me is when we did, and the trust has to have, I forgot the terminology, is a board of directors?
Yes. If it's similar to what I've already established.
Yeah, and I think in the, when it was passed at town meeting, it set the board of directors as the board of selectmen. So that might need, that trust language might also need to be brought back to the council for some rewording. So I thought I would bring that up for you because you don't, you know, I'm trying to get some things on your plate since there's nothing there.
Thank you for that. Now, my plate's going to be moving next week, so it might fall off, but actually, I'm very familiar with setting up an OPEB trust. I think the nightmare that we've got going on here is it's, there is board of selectmen and wording everywhere.
Yeah.
And how are we going to actually change all of that? What's the logical, where do we take the first cut, and then what's the most important ones to start with? If the OPEB trust is indeed moving forward by itself, maybe that's not the first place we need to do, but maybe it is. Maybe getting those legal pieces done. So certainly, that's a good thing for me to just talk to Jim Donahue about what pieces need to be addressed first.
And I, well, I thought if we were to take some action to move transfers of funds, it might be the ideal time to address it at that point, which is why I put it out there.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
I had a quick question. Denise, any movement or with our status with hiring a permanent building inspector slash zoning enforcement officer?
With the HR director position, just a couple of weeks, hopefully a couple of weeks away, I was going to wait and put that on their plate very quickly, but I have been checking with our building official to see how things are going. It's a great time to have the person that we have, and it's saving us a lot of money. Things are being addressed. Zoning violations are being addressed. He's really doing a good job, and he likes doing it. The last two weeks of the year, he was on vacation, and he did our liquor license inspections. So he's really stayed on top of everything, and I see him inspecting the new office. He's really on the ball for it. So I do have a couple of thoughts. Received a phone call from one of the potential applicants from before, wondering if it was still, the position was still available. So I may touch base with them, depending on when the HR person is starting, so please let me know if you hear of any zoning or building issues that are not being addressed. I have one resident that is, I call those frequent flyers, and he's given me six that go back to like 2014. I'm going to be giving them to the building official, and I'm sure he will check them out.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Okay. Seven. Communications correspondence and announcements. Sorry, I skipped the approved minutes to cross that off. There's approved minutes for the 12/13/16 open session and executive session. I'm taking a motion to include the minutes from 12/13/16.
Couple of quick changes you want to throw in discussion now. So on the minutes, on page five, under new business licensing matters, second paragraph, said Councilor Madison commented that the license renewals shouldn't be approved without the authorization from the fire chief. This was in reference to, and I don't remember exactly how I worded it, but this was in reference to the liquor licenses where required by statute. So I just want to kind of make sure that's clear. It was not all licenses. We weren't adding some requirement that doesn't already exist in this state law. And it was also without the signature from the fire chief and building inspector, not someone, they don't authorize the, okay, they sign off that they've inspected it. So that's it. Let's see what changes I have.
So we can add those changes, the approved changes?
So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the December 13/16 open session minutes as amended.
Second. Moving to second, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we're at the second.
No, six and eight. So I'll make a motion to accept the December 13/2016 executive session minutes as submitted.
Some more?
Second.
Moving to second, any further discussion? Here, not all in favor?
Aye.
No. So we have a citation for Eagle Scout Connor Foskett, Troop 179. So we actually, the town, makes a certificate for him that we can...
Thanks.
From the council.
Does that require a vote? Are they asking for us to take it?
No, it's just information.
No, okay.
Wanted everybody to know, so somebody should say thanks for the letter from, for the Eagle Scout, we kind of are aware.
It's like a husband not knowing about the Christmas cards and went off that wife.
Fair enough. B, the MSBA has actually sent the town a letter indicating that we are no longer going to be involved or under consideration for state monies for a new school or school construction project?
Just for this year.
Just for this year, in this funding cycle, yes.
Yep.
So that's just part of what we have to address in capital at some point is probably going to change, but...
We were just talking about that briefly, and, you know, the letter is not specific as to why they weren't accepted in there, and we're just wondering if they're able to access the information, so if they choose to go through this process again next year, that, you know, are there some adjustments that can be made to the, you know, the SOI or what? I'm just curious to know as to why they weren't accepted into it.
You know, through the president, I know in the past, and you probably know, they go by need, and it's just been a question of...
Or districts need it more than we do.
Exactly. There's places that are in worse shape, so they go by need, and once they hit their quota, then that's the end of it, so.
I tend to agree with Joe, though. I don't think it would be a waste of our time at all to inquire if we could get more information as to the reason.
Do we have any idea if Superintendent Smith has more information beyond this letter?
He stopped in my office today for something other than that, and I brought up the letter, and he said he has had a conversation with somebody from the committee.
Okay.
He had, he mentioned the lady's name.
Diane Sullivan?
I'm sorry?
Diane Sullivan, is that the person?
I don't recall the name, but it could be. It was a lady, and he said that she was much more forthcoming than in the past. So he may have some information that he can share. You want me to check on that?
I think it would be helpful because the letter enumerates the fact that there's nothing that prevents the school district slash town from submitting a statement of interest for accelerated repairs.
Correct.
And that's due in about a month from now.
Yeah, even less than that, I think he said, and they're in the process of doing. He's meeting with Bruce Feeny tomorrow about that. And they had, I think, the two grammar schools in mind. Roofs, windows, and doors, I think, are the things that are available under those, those kind of grants, and I thought there were two schools that they were doing metaphorically.
I would also just kind of throw out for your thought, like all council members, that at some point, this town's going to be facing the decision to build, whether it's a new high school or renovate the existing facility, or the middle schools, or a town hall, or at some point, all of these issues, there are, the reality is, at some point, we need to invest in our infrastructure. I think that's one of the things that we should be cognizant of as we enter the, this budget process now and in the future. I'd like to see us, I think it's incumbent upon us to put ourselves in the best possible financial shape to be able to manage such capital expenditures without an enormous tax increase on our residents. And I think with good planning, we can put ourselves in that position, and so it's always something I throw out for your thought process as we enter the budget season, so.
Good point.
Then we have, got the rally post 293, American Legion. They had an issue, or you had asked them to get the crowd control, or the crowd, what do you call it?
Yeah, I think, and I could be...
Crowd manager certification or whatever it's called.
Yep, and I read the correspondence. So a couple of things that bother me about it. One, perhaps this should be checked into as to whether, I believe that under the legislation, they are required to have the crowd manager requirement. I don't believe that they're exempt from it, given the occupancy load of the building. So first off, I don't think we can waive that requirement. I did go on the Department of Fire Service's website, and the program was working fine for me. So I have questions, for example, there's, there is a link on there if you have technical problems getting it to work. Did they use that? Did they call? Did they, you know, how much did they pursue it, or did they just try it and it didn't, and it didn't work? On top of that, the council doesn't have the authority to set the occupancy load. We can't do that, either by license or otherwise. The occupancy load is set by the building commissioner by statute, and we don't have that authority. So he's asking us to do something we don't have the authority to do.
But he's just asking us that we...
That we adjust, that...
That we kind of merge the upstairs and the downstairs capacity.
An adjustment on the requirements under the license that changes the occupancy load, and we can't do that. We don't have the authorities to set occupancy loads.
Well, it doesn't sound like you're saying that. It sounds like you're saying is, they're going to keep another 99 people for both upstairs and downstairs, and if it goes over 99 people...
and downstairs, and if it goes over 99 people, then an individual certified in crowd control will be on site. I mean, that's just from this email that.
Yeah, I agree. So, back to your original point, what is, what is the actual rule with, if, let's say there's, there's no venue upstairs, and they're in the downstairs section, there's, you know, maximum occupancy of 63, does that require a bar manager to be crowd control certified with 63 people? Or do you have to combine?
The requirement is based on the posted occupancy load, not on the occupancy at the time.
The occupancy load is 63.
Yeah, so that's what I'm asking, is, are you combining, are you looking at the total occupancy of the building, whether the upstairs is being used or not? Or are we looking at this more by floor?
The statute would look at the total occupancy of the, of a function, of the functions. Now, if the function could, the occupancy load could be over 100, or 100 or over, then they're required to have that license. So, that requirement is based upon the posted occupancy load, not necessarily a function that's occurring at any particular moment. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, 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 that makes perfect sense.
Is either one of them is at 100?
Right.
But if they have functions at both sides, it would exceed 100.
Or if there's two functions going on, it exceeds the 100, or that kind of thing. So, that's why the statute only recognizes the total occupancy load.
Am I mistaken, isn't there a sign on the building itself, this is the one that's in Crane Avenue, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
That says functions up to 150? Or am I confusing by another place?
So, right there.
I could be wrong, but.
So, all I'm saying is, I'm not inclined, I think that this is, I'm telling you, I've taken the crowd managers, it's 45 minutes on the computer, and it's simple to do. I'd like to pursue it a little bit more. I'm just not inclined to do things that, personally, I don't think we have the authority to do to start with.
No, I'm not saying we change the thing. I was just, when I read what he was asking for originally, was to just approve pending his crowd certification. Originally, that's what he had asked, because he was having trouble getting into it or whatever.
Right, right.
So, approval would be while he was getting that done.
I don't really look that way.
I think, honestly, I think it can be remedied even just a few days. I don't think it's a.
His request is dated December 13th, which is pretty much a month ago, so we don't have accurate, up-to-the-minute news if the gentleman has in fact gotten onto the website and done this, because it could be a mode issue.
Good point, too.
I thought, Marge, in passing, said something about, he found out that it was easy to do and had done it, but I, I'm not sure of that.
Yeah, I think we just, you know, if it needs to be done, I'm sorry, it was inconvenienced, and the website wasn't working on that particular day. Hopefully, he's already taken it, because if it is a requirement, then I wouldn't be comfortable even considering.
It has to be done.
Yeah, I think what he's asking is, you know, to Eric's point, is just not within our purview anyhow, so let's just have him get it done, and we can be done with it and move on. Makes sense?
Yeah.
Jim?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Do you want to talk about Mr. Higgins?
What was that?
Mr. Higgins's complaint?
Yes.
Okay.
This letter I drafted at the request of the, of the president. Under the regulations, when a question or concern or complaint is raised regarding a board complying with the requirements of the open meeting law, unless the board itself is going to be filing a response to the issues raised by the complaining party, the board needs to formally authorize the responder to prepare the response. And in this case, it's the town council, town attorney, preparing the response on behalf of the council. And the letter you have is the draft that I prepared to send to the complaining party and to the attorney general, so they understand the issue. And the complaint really involves your last meeting and the agenda for the last meeting, and the issue is that this person lives in Swansea, it's not a, he's not a resident of East Long Meadow, a person who I don't even know if he's ever been here or not. But his issue was that the renewal of the licenses approved by the council at your last meeting, the annual renewal, that really is a ministerial act, because unless there's some violation in existence, you have no authority not to renew those without holding a public hearing and bringing all the facts in for each individual license. His complaint was that those licenses were not individually identified by licensee, address of the license premises, and the type of license. And in reviewing the letter rulings that are issued by the attorney general with respect to violations, we determined that there was a determination by the attorney general last year, that even in the renewal of licenses in a ministerial fashion, as the council was doing, that to comply with the notice requirements of the open meeting law, that the notice of the meeting, in our case, we entitled it the agenda, that's posted outside the clerk's office and on the bulletin, the electronic bulletin board in the library, and also on the website, should contain that listing, so people could know what licenses are being renewed, even though they may not wish to attend. So, recognizing that fact, I drafted a letter indicating, we didn't think that it was necessary for renewal of licenses, because they're in existence, residents know the places that have licenses and the type that they have, and we have no issue with the renewal of any of these as far as their operation is concerned. However, we note the attorney general's determination, and we'll comply with it going forward here. The second, and so that's what the first half of the letter is, the second half of the letter is that the individual stated that the notice of meeting, or the agenda that was posted, did not contain the date and identity, the date and time that it was posted outside the clerk's office. It was stamped as to when it was received, but it didn't have a handwritten note to that effect. And so, we've agreed, that makes sense. We don't have any real issue with doing that going forward with the council meetings or any of the other boards that exist, so that's what the letter says we're going to do. If you approve the content of the letter, then I will send it to the complaining party and to the attorney general, and then it's up to the attorney general, well, first of all, the complaining party has to move it forward to the attorney general, saying, I disagree with the resolution that the town or city is taking. And then the attorney general would review it and make a determination. If the person filing the notice of complaint doesn't move anything or complain further with respect to our response, then within about 60 days, we'll get a letter from the attorney general's office saying, no action been taken, we accept your response, and the case is dismissed. So, to make a very simple question, long-winded.
You get paid by the word, don't you?
Actually, I have a quick question. So, in the future, when it's time to renew these licenses, we have to list each one of them separately?
Yes.
As an agenda item?
Yes.
How many were there total?
It was like over two.
If I might, just to respond further to that, further on in your agenda, there's an item here asking you to reaffirm the vote that you took, the December 13th meeting, and by approving the attached list. And the list of all the licenses that were approved at the December 13th meeting is part of your meeting tonight. And I've been informed by the clerk's office, it's not really an onerous project. We have that information, it's just a matter of, in the past, we've never perceived it to be an issue where the statute required that you give this depth of information. Actually, in response to the complaint, if you look at your agendas at some point in the future, you will see that a number of the items have more specific information about the identity of the people, or the items that are actually being presented, and that again, is the effort by the clerk and the town to address the desires or rulings of the attorney general as to how the agendas or the notices of meetings should be, should be contained.
So, the posting for, the public posting for tonight's meeting included that list?
Yes.
So, I did read the letter, I thought it was well-stated and very well-written, and I would move that we authorize the town attorney to send the letter to the needed parties on behalf of the council.
Sorry?
Moving to second, any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Tom, we have to do our hearing, right?
Which agenda did it say?
This one is, the next item has to do with the continuation, and I was in the last meeting, the Department of Agricultural Resources.
Oh, right, okay.
It's called EMDAR. And we need to do the press with, with the requirement is to read the, to read the notice of proposed acquisition into the record, and that's on page two, so.
Just quickly touching on it, I got a question, well, why do you want to waive the 60-day requirement?
Well, my question really was, what purpose does 120 days serve, and what purpose would be served by removing that? That was really awkward.
And I did call them, and I did, I did get a response from them on that, so I can read the notice in, or I can.
Let him read the notice, and then when that question comes up, I did for that, yeah.
If I might, just to sort of clarify, no, not clarify, but just to muddy it more. We've received this request from the state agency that this notice be put on your agenda, and it be read. The statute that they refer to here has, there's nothing that the town does under the statute. The town's not involved at all, other than the request from this agency to put it on your agenda and read it. So, what's really being done here is the state agricultural agency, or one of them, is purchasing developmental rights of this property owner's land, and say, you, I will be paying you X number of dollars for your development rights, and you're going to continue in perpetuity using this land for the current agricultural purpose that you do, which is growing of vegetables. The concern and the question that I have is, the letter that we received from the state, other than, in addition to having the notice of meeting read into the record, asks for the town to send a certification that, the public hearing notice and required by the statute was actually read and on the agenda, and send that into them. The concern I have, and the questions I called into the drafter of the letter yesterday, and no one's gotten back to me, was the statute doesn't require any of that to be done by the town.
Right.
What it requires is the commissioner of Decam to hold a public hearing in the town, and let the public, if they're interested, come in and talk about the issue or ask questions. But there's, it appears, and it only appears, I'm not saying they're doing this, but it appears they're trying to circumvent the public hearing requirement by using the certification by the council that you've given notice to the people, and therefore, they've complied with the requirements of statute. They haven't done that. In my recommendation would be, you read the notice, you have it in your records, because they've asked for it, it doesn't hurt us to do that, it tells the people that there's an issue out there. But I would not recommend that you send the certification in, because you're, as a community and as a committee.
Don't have that.
Or a council, you're not involved in this process at all. So, you're doing them a favor by reading it, but I think that's all we should do, unless and until they respond to us with some statutory authority in addition to what they provided, or regulatory authority, or some other executive order by the governor, that we need to do something different now what the statute requires.
I saw that, and I was going to ask that question, why are we sending off on a public hearing?
Yeah, it's not my recommendation that you do that, but.
Good.
I'm a lawyer, and I'm used to my claims, I'm listening to what I tell the attorney general.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. I guess I went that I can read the notice of acquisition.
So, we'll read the notice?
Into the record.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, we'll read.
And we'll be done.
In compliance with General Law, Chapter 7, C, Section 37, Commonwealth Massachusetts acting by and through its Department of Agricultural Resources, the department hereby gives notice that it proposes to acquire an agricultural preservation restriction, APR, on the real property identified herein for the purpose of protecting in perpetuity, it's a big word, its superior productive agricultural resources by preventing their conversion to other uses. The application received by EMDAR indicates that the property is owned by John Bernie and consists of parcels located at Markham Road, as approximately represented on the attached map, maps. The APR may encompass all or parts of the area shown. The current use of the property is primarily for vegetables. Following the accord, a recording of the APR, the use of the subject property is limited to agricultural use, as more particulars set forth in the APR agreement, the General Law's Chapter 184, Section 31, and the regulations of the department, Chapter 330, CMR 22. And with that said, I, you know, I did a call, Mr. Hall, and he gave me a message on the consent of cutting 120 down to 60 days. And he said that the, that this waiver, they can expedite the project to move it along quicker. Said there are two funding mechanisms come through the state environmental bond or the federal USDA agreement. In order for them to be considered for funding, the town's consent, bringing it down to 60 days would start the clock sooner. The reduction of the consent period is a big factor to keep projects moving along from those two mechanisms which they receive funding from.
My only other concern on that is, if we were to agree on that without requiring public hearing, I mean, are we kind of like circumventing the system that I'm putting in place? Yeah, I, my recommendation is.
That's why Jim's not going to do anything other than read it.
It's the state's puppy, let the state.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hammer Hill petition update.
That's mine, yes. On the 14th of December, I met with, as part of the Hammer Hill Petition Committee myself, Mr. Florence, Superintendent Smith, Mr. Ficero from the school committee, the police department, although they weren't at that particular one, but they've been actively involved, a rep from the police department. And one of the petitioners, it was more of a status meeting to address and let the individual know that we had taken steps to mitigate some of the concerns around the logjam of parking on Hammer Hill when there are sporting events at Burchland Park. And the issue continues to be that there is ample parking space available in the parking lots. However, the visitors and the parents.
Choose not to walk.
Choose to park along the access road, or double, park on both sides of Hammer Hill. And so, we've taken steps, and I should, I, I'm going to read Mr. Drury from the rec department, has also been in attendance. And we've taken steps for the spring season to have signage placed alerting the spectators that they must park in the lots. The rec department will meet with coaches before the spring season to educate them and get the word out to their parent bodies that parking along the access road to the school or on the street of Hammer Hill will not be tolerated. And if necessary, you know, there will be some ticketing and towing by the police department should it come to that. The petitioner was more than pleased with the efforts, and we've set another date at the end of April, right as the sports season begins, to just all make sure our ducks are in a row and, and go forward with it. So, it's a project that's still in process, but has some happy endings at the end of the road.
I can handle that. All right. Thank you, Kathy, and Tom, and everybody else involved, really, but Mike, you're on the subcommittee for the update for.
Yeah, myself, Kathy, Eric, and the attorney of our choice had the luxury of meeting prior to the holidays. We met for approximately an hour. Most of the bullet points that the three of us worked on, we were all in agreement with. We gave the attorney a little bit of homework to do for us. We'll be meeting again tomorrow night, and anxious to look at what he's put together, and we'll proceed from there.
The draft of that document was just received last Friday. Draft of that document was just received last Friday at like four in the afternoon. So, it's forwarded to everybody and we're meeting next on Wednesday.
All right, thank you.
Optimistic we'll be able to meet with the town manager in short order, start discussing.
She's fine. It's all right. She's picking up paint.
Famous last words.
It's actually holding up my being able to apply for benefits because I don't have a start date, so.
But you're, under your current contract, you're eligible for all employee benefits?
I have to have a change in, until I have a new contract, I'm working under the old contract and until I have a change in status, there's something that I can't apply for benefits. So, I need a start date.
Did you waive them initially?
Did I waive that initially?
Did you waive benefits initially?
Okay.
So, she does need...
Because I didn't want them at that...
So, check quality, but yes, you would need a...
So, if you could at least address that.
But we will move in great haste to do it quickly.
I think we're on the, you know, the fast track now. It was, the holidays really slowed down the process.
And I'm not, you know, without insurance, so gotta be careful.
Thank you for your patience.
You're welcome.
All right, so now, we have a public meeting, a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Mr. O'Leary is here. So, we'll start the public meeting. The reason for this meeting is to discuss the town's fiscal year 2017 Community Development Strategy. The Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has represented this evening to present their plan. Council members from left to right is Mike King, that's actually right to left, sorry, Diana Anderson, Eric Madison, Kevin Manley, Paul Federici, Joe Ford, Kathleen Hill, and Mike King. This is a public meeting and the procedures is falls. We're going to open the public meeting. Welcome, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you.
Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, thank you for being here. You can explain sort of for everybody why you're here.
Absolutely. I'd like to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to speak, I'm a community development planner at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And basically where I'm here is I am writing the FY 2017 Community Development Block Grant for both the towns of East Long Meadow and Hampden. We're collaborating together and there's some shared projects within that application. But the purpose here for tonight is to speak in regards to the community development strategy, which is a requirement of the application. So, I wanted to put it out front, this does not hold the council any accountability outside of the application. This is a document that's only going to be used as a tool, as part of the application. This meeting was advertised two weeks prior in the reminder, as well as the Town Bulletin. And, yeah, and basically I just wanted to take the opportunity to go through. I actually printed out one copy short, so if there's any questions, I might have to refer to one of yours. But basically...
I have it electronically.
Oh, do you? Oh, okay, thank you.
Does anyone from the audience want to come?
So, yeah, basically going through it, it's pretty straightforward. It's really, the document is to show DHCD, Department of Housing, Community Development, some of the planned summaries that East Long Meadow has put together showing their community development efforts throughout the years. I won't go through every one unless there's a question on them. But kind of the most important part of this document is showing the priority projects in that they align with the activities that we're applying for, for the grant. So, on the bottom of page four, where it starts, economic development through housing, public facilities, infrastructure, recreation, social services, transportation planning, those are the, kind of the priorities that we established as part of this document. And in that, we've applied or we're taking the... Right now, we're going forward with activities that we deemed over the past few months with the advisory committee, which has been a pleasure to work with. It includes Denise, Robin, and Diane, as well as Robert, he's not here. And so, what we've, based on what the priorities of the town are and what is realistic because of this grant in nature is so competitive, that we found that with, coupled with the needs of the town and realistically what we have a good shot at applying for, we came to the activities of Housing Rehabilitation Program, AVR Design Study for the Town Hall, and Architectural Bar Removal Design Study, sidewalk infrastructure project, including ADA compliant ramps, as well as a mobile food pantry. So, those were things that we had, that deemed, you know, good projects to apply for in the application. And, yeah, and so, and really, the main point here was just to have any comments or questions from the public or the council about the document going forward. And if there is none, it would be, if it was okay with you guys to accept this and endorse it into the application for this year's grant.
So, I have one quick question that I think you hardly answered it when you said it really doesn't bind the council to any, the commitment of any projects or anything. And I get that, it's for the grant development. But assuming the grant is received, were in the beginning phases of instituting the new charter, part of that charter calls for the town manager to lead the charge in a long-range plan that gets renewed every five years. If some of those, some of what we represent is the community priorities or projects change as a result of that process, but we've already received the grant, will that have any impact on that grant money?
So, this is actually an evolving document that can be updated and it's actually required that it's updated every three years. So, it's nothing that this is set in stone and nothing can ever change.
Okay, so muddies are received for a, it won't impact that?
Right.
Good, okay, thank you.
I actually see this as a precursor to a better document.
Yeah, I think the two will probably work well together, but that doesn't mean it will be some changes to this.
And to expand a little on some of the things, they were pretty high level. One of them, the barrier removal at Town Hall is actually an elevator, the engineering study for an elevator. And the housing rehab that we can assist with is geared toward a certain income level. So, there are some houses that we've done that in the past and this is in addition to what has been done in the past. And it's sort of a rolling fund where the, their loans, correct?
Yep, yes.
And low interest or the...
Yeah, so, yeah. Basically, it's over 15 years and it's paraded each year. And if the person lives in that household for 15 years, it's forgiven.
But if they sell it prior to that, we get the money at the closing. So, it helps somebody that just can't afford to maybe do a roof to be able to afford to do it, that kind of a thing. It's a good worthwhile program.
Who from the town worked on this? I like that a lot of this has been done capital planning in the past, a lot of this stuff appeared on that plate. I like what I've read, who was involved?
Right, so the inaugural one was actually a few years back with last time East Long Meadow worked with Egwam. And so, this was just an update, but this was through the advisory committee with Denise, Robin, Diane, and Robert.
Pop here, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say, maybe I'll see if the other...
Okay, good.
Now, we can open for public comments if anybody has any public input? No. All right, that was easy.
So, you need a motion? You need an official act on it? So, I would contend that we accept the proposal before this evening, how like the ethical public hearing first.
Oh, yeah. We're going to close the public hearing at this time now. Entertain a motion to accept the community development plan in order for us to plan it here.
Do we move the public hearing or does this happen automatically?
No, we're done.
No, we don't have to make a motion and vote the public hearing?
No.
No, he just...
No.
So, Paul just made the motion, I can...
So, it's moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I would ask, one last thing, when, I don't know if the time's right now, but DHCD loves to see a sign-in sheet, essentially, you know, doesn't count unless we have that. Yeah, exactly. So, whenever the chance, I'll just leave it.
Sure.
Pass it around.
Yeah, once you ran it through.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
You just need the council members?
No, I'll be around, yeah, I just, yeah.
Sign it and get a copy.
Yeah, everyone that's here.
Thank you.
Like print my name or no?
Mike.
Yes, yeah, that's right.
Mike, after that sign-in sheet gets to you, it's a kind of a simple passing around maybe on the public, so get as many ones that gets down, Don that's on.
All right, so E is conference attendance policies for town employees. I'm actually going to think we could just skip that for this meeting and move on because I think Denise and I could probably work on that without getting much fanfare.
What is that again? I'm sorry?
Conference attendance employees, conference attendance policies for town employees because they're different for every group, but it's more...
Oh, for her?
Her than it is for us. Just kind of put it out there as the result of a discussion about it, but...
So, we're just taking no action?
Yeah. Mr. Carabeta? It's your turn.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Mike Carabeta, 202 Allen Street, East Long Meadow. I'm in agreement to buy a parcel of land at the end of Baldwin Street. Part of that agreement is contingent upon a zone change for part of the land. This, tonight being here is a first step for what I believe is that process. So, I think with your endorsement, it heads to the planning board from here. So, I think tonight, that is in fact what I'm looking for. I do have schematics where he wants to take a look. Again, I'm assuming this board is going to hold a public hearing after the planning board's public hearing and that information will be forthwith that night.
So, pretty much, Mike, just so everybody's understanding, you're looking for us to send it to planning?
In essence, that's the way I'm, I believe, I believe it's, understanding what's the way it belongs, that's the way it goes.
We did this once before, I think, yeah, yeah, which hasn't come back to us yet.
No, those were the changes that they were trying to make to the, right? So, I mean, realistically, Mr. Carabeta's received 104 signatures that have been certified to move it forward and we just have to move the vote to send this proposed change back to the planning board for public hearing. So, that's realistically good. This is about...
So, the public's real clear, this in no way, those who are watching, this is not an endorsement of this plan?
This is procedural.
I understand, just allow the process.
So...
Did you move it? Yes, I did. Second.
So, it's moved in second and is there any further discussion? All in favor of moving it to the plan board?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being patient.
I don't know if it's state law or, we can't discuss annul it. Yeah, I was talking about the process.
Silly stuff in the process.
Yeah, I thought that first...
Did I say that a lot? You guys sit there for an hour and a half, gee, we renew the plan, like we just send it to the plan. Let them do it. They should go to them first. All right, so moving on to, like you all said, or no?
I am, I'm just going to pass this back for them.
Oh, yeah. You want me to wait?
Sure, if you can wait just one second.
Say if you want me to, once you introduce the next one, I can take it from there because I've been a clean man until they turn me off, let's make nothing.
Are you booed?
Well, yes and no.
Kind of sort of about really?
Yeah, exactly.
All right. So, we're going to move to G, approval of police chief and town manager's voting members of the Regional 911 Emergency Communication Dispatch Planning Committee. Wow, that's a mouthful.
Yeah, it is a mouthful.
And if I may, through the president, I've been involved in this Regional 911 planning effort since its inception, which is probably more than a year ago. When it first started, I was named the representative on behalf of the Board of Selectment. And at that time, we had Sergeant, I believe we had Police Chief Morissette and Sergeant Manning from the Police Department as the other two representatives. We have to have three representatives from the town on this board as appointed people. Obviously, we've had some changes and what they're looking for now is, what we want to do is put, instead of Sergeant Manning, we want to put Chief DeLassio on along with Chief Morissette and also put Denise on as town manager. What I will do is I will no longer be technically an active member of the board, but I'm still going to stay on as the chairman of their finance committee. So, the whole part process here is to approve Denise Menard and Jeff DeLassio as new members of the Regional 911 Dispatch Group.
So, just for clarification, I want, when I first read this, I was a little surprised and I thought that is not a, that's not an action under the charter required from this council. That would be a town manager action. So, I went and read the enabling legislation because this is actually a district planning committee, which is identified in the legislation that enables this and funds it through the grant. And it requires, the legislation requires the appointment by the town council. Our charter does not. Right, so it's one of those deals that if the town manager is bringing those names forward as the appointment and of course the town manager is one of them, then we have to do the appointment here. So, just a clarification of it.
Thank you, Eric.
So, I'll entertain a motion to approve Chief DeLassio and Denise Menard as the voting members in the Regional 911 Emergency Communication District Planning Committee.
Second.
It's moved in second, any further discussion? Here, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, all right. H, voter affirm approval of license renewals voted on the December 13th meeting, 2016, as set forth in attachment A, which is the log list that we had. Jim explained why we're basically revisiting this issue, so I'm not going to rehash it in the interest of saving my breath and boring everybody else at the table. So, I'll entertain a motion to reaffirm the license renewals from the December 13th meeting.
So, move, as set forth in attachment A.
Yes, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. St. Michael's Knights of Columbus, number 9960, is seeking a one-day license for beer and wine Wednesday, January 25th, 2017, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 at the St. Michael Parish Center. Their insurance is already on file.
So, move?
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unico Chapter of East Long Meadow, Friday, is a one-day license for beer and wine for Friday, February 10th, 2017, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at St. Luke's Church and their insurance also is on file.
It is an Italian American...
Yeah. Ask Richard Chair. And then set aside a half an hour. But, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second to approve the one-day liquor license for beer and wine.
Can I make another pain in the butt question? When in the motion, when in the request, they specifically ask us to waive the fee, do we have to have a motion, a vote to waive the fee like the one from St. Michael says we asked it, or is it just inferred because it's part of the letter?
That's, usually, we usually do put it as part of the motion, so...
Okay, so I'd hear it on the St. Michael's one.
We might revisit that.
All right, St. Michael's.
When do we vote on this?
All right, let's finish this one, 7:30, Unico. Here we go.
So, just a technical question, who's serving the alcohol, St. Luke's staff or Unico staff?
I'm not sure, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's Unico.
Okay, then they get the license.
It's the members, the members of Unico.
They just use it in the hall, really.
So, was it moved in second?
Yes.
Yes. So, any further discussion on Unico's one-day liquor license? Here, none? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion that we waive the fee as part of a priorly, prior approved motion from St. Michael's Knights of Columbus, as requested in their application.
So, move?
Second.
Moved in second, thank you, Don, by the way, appreciate that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, can I ask the president for a five-minute recess? There's something that came over me to address.
Sure. We'll take a five-minute recess. All in favor?
Aye.
We have one final...
The first step of the, of the budget proceedings is, is to have a joint meeting with the Board of Ed. So, we should probably set that up to go over the, whatever guidelines the council chooses.
We can do that within the confines of our regular meeting, or should that be a separate meeting?
That's up to you all.
I, I, sticking with what we set out in the original, the, the first Tuesday of the month, or second Tuesday, where this is...
Second, yeah.
Second Tuesday of the month was for, like, tonight's been a lot of legislative action. But any other meetings in between, it...
Can be others, the other stuff.
So I would do one in, in between...
So like two weeks from today or something?
Keep that as the only agenda item, so that we can focus on that.
That's great.
Yeah, that's fine.
Any idea how, how long that meeting, what is, what is going to be discussed? What's the length of the meeting?
I gave you all the Article Six, so I can, I can provide, certainly I can answer any questions you all have and provide whatever information you want. I think I'll have the accountant come so that we're, we're all on the same page as we start, and any dialogue that needs to be had, everybody's in the room that, that would be affected by the process, so...
So what I envision, and what I think the intent of the charter was, that the town manager along with the town accountant, when it comes to whoever's in place at that point, can give us an overview of the current financial status of the town? What a, and you can't really nail it down, but a brief financial picture for the ensuing fiscal year looks like, like maybe some of the liabilities that we're going to have to deal with, or some of the expenses that might not be part of the normal that we might have to deal with. And I know you're very early into the capital planning process, so maybe a little bit about up here.
We don't even have to go up here because we're pretty close to down here.
Okay, cool. But what, so that was more global view of what that's looking like?
Right.
And, and possible funding mechanisms for that? So that, the intent of it was that the school committee and the council, who, those two groups have the biggest impact obviously on the appropriation of the budget, that they, they all hear the same thing.
And then can start...
From there, discussions can be, can start to take place in terms of, you know...
Flat budget or two percent or...
Right, what do we want? What are our financial objectives for the ensuing fiscal year? But till we have that initial information, it's difficult to make those financial objectives. So that's kind of how I envisioned it.
So if I may, through the president, are we in agreement that we should meet with them if we can on the 24th?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Six o'clock, usual meeting time?
Yeah. We sat and I'd remind Tom that we also had invited the, and it's a good time for it, we invited the debt advisory committee...
The debt squad?
The debt squad.
Debt squad.
The debt squad to give their presentation on the 24th.
That's a good time for it.
So, make sure that's included on the agenda.
Yeah, so we're talking two weeks from tonight, right?
Yeah.
Yes. And I, they're also on a meeting with them next week, so I'll make sure that they are prepared to do a presentation.
Great. Sounds good.
So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, quick point. Do we have to do anything with this letter?
No.
From Greenwich?
Well, the guy from Greenwich basically says that there's issues with the traffic going through the parking lot. It's a private business, it's not...
Nothing we can do to advise them, just the...
It happens with the chicken as well.
Speed bumps.
I, I, I would only ask that town manager respond accordingly to whatever assistance we can give them within the confines of the laws that we're allowed to.
That's not ours.
It's really not a council.
It was addressed to you all, that's why I gave it to you.